Six o'clock, I will call the City of Alleghen City Council meeting to order for December eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Could I please have roll call?
Chair, Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Westover.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Canales.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hands. Mayor Perrigo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Could I please get a motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Hands who let us know previously that he would not be in attendance tonight?
I make a motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Hands.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number four A is approval of the regular council meeting agenda for December eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. If there are no changes, could I please get a motion to approve?
Let me motion approve the agenda for December eighth.
Seconded.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Five A is approval of the regular council meeting minutes from November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. I did see one correction. It should be Mayor Pro Tem Hands called the meeting to order instead of myself. Were there any other corrections that anyone noticed? All right, could I get a motion to approve those minutes with that change?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next agenda item will be agenda item number nine, which is public comment. If you have a public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and we limit this to three minutes, and this is for items that are not on the agenda. I am seeing no public comment, so I will go ahead and move down to ten A, which is a request from On Point to place a naloxone vending box at the Riverfront Restrooms.
I'm going to introduce Gina and invite her up to the podium. She's with On Point, and they're making this request.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gina Kerber. I am the Chief Operating Officer at On Point. Mark is in Lansing today, so you get me. And so we just wanted to talk about having a naloxone vending box at the Riverfront restroom. We do already have one at the Alleghen Health Department here in Alleghen County, but we felt that having it in the restroom would provide better access to the community, given that it's, you know, high traffic, public area, reaches people who might not be connected to health services or even our services. So that was really why we were looking at that particular location. So just to kind of give a little bit of background on what these are, naloxone, it is internasal, so it is something that can be done with very little training, and it is, you know, really to address the ongoing opioid crisis here in Michigan and across the United States. Timely access to naloxone in public spaces really helps reduce death, and so that is why we are looking at that. And if you happen to use naloxone when you are not in an overdose situation, it is still safe to do that. So if somebody were to gain access to it and accidentally use it, then there's no harm to them in that situation. So Michigan has over fifty-five vending machines statewide. More than twenty thousand naloxone kits are dispensed from those public machines. And in Michigan, with the advent of those machines, we had five point seven percent reduced deaths in overdoses. The naloxone vending box is free to us through a grant, so that's how we were able to get access to that. And it is able to be restocked by the Grand Rapids Red Project, so they would be willing to come restock it when needed. So, and they kind of just do a cycle through to check to see if they need them, or if someone notices that it's empty, we can alert them and they'll come refill it. So, either way. So that is our proposal. I have more information if you guys want more statistics or any other information, but I'll pause there.
Mayor, before you guys, council starts asking questions, just some background information, we already have two very small boxes that the city installed with a local company here. One is at the Riverfront Restrooms. It holds two of those boxes, so this is a little bit larger. And there's one in the lobby here at City Hall. That was a decision that city staff made, I made, working with the police department. Since this is a little bit larger, be a little more prevalent, I thought it was appropriate for this to come in front of City Council. The one that's at the Riverfront Restrooms right now will be transferred, if you may forward with us, will be transferred to the Fire Department. I talked to Chief Nick Brink last Friday, and he said they would love to have it because they don't have one right now.
The, sorry if anybody had, the picture here is that what the vending machine will look like? What, I, I'm just curious on, you know, what, what the vending machine, if it's going to be on the ground, is it on the wall?
It's on the ground, like that model. I'd have to double check if it says that Harm Reduction Michigan on it, but it would be pretty similar to what that looks like.
Okay.
And you said there's fifty, fifty-five total in the state?
In the state right now, that we know of. I mean, there may be more, but that's what we know of.
Because with fifty-five in the whole state, I'm just wondering, where do you determine, how do you determine where to place them?
That's a great question. A lot of it is, you know, around funding and getting access to have them. So we're fortunate enough to have grant dollars to be able to gain access to these, so that's what allowed the Health Department to have theirs. That was through the same grant. And then when we were debating where to put one, obviously, we thought about, you know, our lobby at On Point, but also thought, you know, well, maybe it might be nice to have it in a location where folks, you know, are not receiving our services, because similarly, we have small kits and things like that that our staff have and carry in the community. And if someone came in and requested that, you know, we could provide it to them. So, you know, we just kind of thought that this might be a better location for it than our office, so.
If we did, is something, you know, like a trial for three to six months, could we get an update from the Red Project on, you know, I, I don't want people to be taking this that do not need it, and they're wasting. So I'm just more of a curiosity thing of, of how many they're having to restock.
Sure, yeah, we can definitely look at that. It is something that we do encourage folks to take, even if they don't necessarily need it at the moment. So, you know, we do encourage folks to have it in their car, things like that, too, you know, even if they might not need it in that moment. So I do know that the Red Project has already, you know, has been refilling the one at the Health Department, so that one is being utilized. And we can certainly do a trial. Like I said, you know, if it's not working out, you know, we could always look at moving it back to our office.
And, and maybe that's not necessarily, I'm just like thinking, we've had some vandalism.
Right.
At that restroom, but we do have, you know, some cameras and that, so I think we could keep an eye on that if, if it's vandalism going on. Because I'm like you, I want people to get this that need it, but not to be reckless.
This, this just kind of popped in my head. So this is similar to like the family care packages that the Health Department puts out at local drinking establishments and other publicly accessible areas. Okay. That was in my brain when I wrote the report for you guys on Thursday.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
If Grand Rapids Red is going to be refilling them, and you have that contact with them, city staff will be in that bathroom a lot more often than Grand Rapids Red would be. Would city staff have that information so that they could contact them, or are they supposed to notify you?
Yeah, we can get them that information so that they have it, and then we do also have supply on hand as well. So if for some reason, you know, the Red Project wasn't able to come down fast enough, we could also do that. But they're pretty responsive, so.
And also, just to everybody in council, my report, we have a relationship with the Red Project. Once a week, they set up their RV in the Copper Street parking lot. I think they're going on year two of being there once a week, so, you know. If we see something that looks awry, or if it's empty, we'll quickly, you know, reach out to On Point, probably first because they're right down the street. And if we don't get anywhere with them, we'll probably reach out to Grand Rapids.
Was someone stocking the one that's there now?
Uh, no.
Okay.
So we, we have one, not missing, we have one that has been taken from that area or utilized, or whatever phrasing you want to use, but there's still one in there, so it's not empty.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any other questions, or?
I don't have a question, but I would just say that I've been very supportive of this. I've gone through trainings multiple times. We actually were chosen at, at my office in Van Buren to do this. Obviously, my office is a little bit different, but what I do like is that the bathroom's open, is it twenty-four?
Seven to eleven.
Seven to eleven.
Seven days a week.
Whereas, you know, the Health Department in your office is closing at five, so it gives people a better opportunity. Yeah, I always carry several because you never know, and so I think, I think it's a really good idea.
Is the lobby, I'm just more curious, is the lobby at On Point open?
No.
No, so that is like, okay. All right. I do like that the, I do like that what we have now is going to get sent to the Fire Department. I think that is a good place to have this type of thing. Yeah. So, any other questions? No? All right, and you would like a motion?
I would like a motion.
From council? All right, could I get a motion to approve the placement of a naloxone vending machine at the Riverfront Restrooms?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving down to agenda item eleven A one is a review of the December twenty twenty-five Airport Advisory Board Meeting Minutes. And since Mayor Pro Tem Hands is not here, Joel?
I can handle it. I actually attended the majority of this meeting. So they got an update on the construction project dealing with the Pappy Baphylites. They're going to be shipped, you know, middle of this month and probably installed out there, you know, after the new year. The T hangar that was constructed this summer is complete and is all full. Jason Appol and Mike Brower, the current chairperson, requested to be reappointed. So we'll be bringing those to City Council on the twenty-second. That's more of a reminder for you and I that we have to do that. That's why I looked at you, because that's not on our to-do list in my office. We then had a discussion about the tie-down fee at the airport. So we rent the hangers, you know, for a few hundred dollars a month. And then in our fee schedule, we have a tie-down fee for monthly at twenty-five dollars a month. Nobody leaves their airplanes out there for twenty-five dollars for a month at a time. And so the question was, and we don't have a full-time staff person out there, we don't have a FBO, a fixed base operator that we contract with out there to run the airport. So there's not really a way to collect that money. So we had some discussion about, you know, what if we put, you know, A, is that charge adequate? And if we would be interested in putting a sign near the tie-downs with a QR code, just says, hey, if you're going to tie to this, you gotta pay. So click the QR code and probably get, see if we can get some people to be a little more honest. Right now, we do have two airplanes on the tarmac out there. That was a former tenant of the privately owned Red Hangar that is out there. Their relationship has been terminated, so the planes were moved out to the tarmac. We're having a very hard time contacting that prop, that property owner, the plane owner, to have them relocate their planes. So we're working on that right now. That's kind of tied into this whole tie-down, you know, should we be charging them to park, you know, their aircraft out there. We then also talked about the helicopter tours that happened out there. They put their signs out there. They don't pay us a fee. They do purchase their gas from us out there. And we do make some money, very, albeit a very small percentage of profit off gas sales out there. So there was some discussion on whether or not we should have them pay us a fee for, you know, utilizing our airport for their tours. The gist of those discussions was staff was directed to reach out to the other airports and see how they do business in regards to that, and come back with a recommendation. The fuel nozzle has been having some issues, so there was a motion to ask council to purchase a new nozzle and correct the size hose. Jeff Mori will be working on that report for council and bring it to you at a later meeting. And then, right now, there are eight available units out there to be rented in the T hangers. The grass runway is officially closed and abandoned by M dot Arrow. That finally got fully approved. And then they talked a lot about this fly-in they want to do in June, on June twentieth of two thousand and twenty-six. We don't have any city events going on, so they want to do like a pancake breakfast, a fly-in, and just come out and get to know the airport, kind of a thing. And then Jason Appol, as is mentioned every year, he wishes more city employees would be out there hunting and removing deer, but that would take a motion by City Council to approve a hunting, lack of a better phrase, a hunting season at the airport, and right now, staff just doesn't see that as a necessity. So we have not brought that to you. Any questions?
Why the, why the grass runway? Why, why was that important to?
Eliminate? So that was a discussion that occurred about four or five years ago at the beginning, you know. The discussion began about four or five years ago. Eliminating the grass runway frees up other parts of the airport for private box hangar construction. So we get more people to build their box hangers out there, and then pay a ground lease to the city to be, have larger aircraft stored out there. It also took two acres, that is along M two twenty-two deffernage there. We would now be able to sell that off to a private developer. And the grass runway just was not being used. We have a perfectly fine asphalt runway. A handful of people will tell you they do use it, but it was just a handful, so. The Airport Advisory Board voted, I think, two or three years ago to start the process to get rid of the grass runway and decommission it. Any other questions about what happened at the airport December meeting?
All right, and eleven A two is a review of the December two thousand and twenty-five Zoning Board of Appeals meeting minutes.
All right, the Zoning Board of Appeals, just to remind council, this is the board that exists when somebody wants to appeal a decision made by the Planning Commission or our zoning administrator. And, you know, when we say no, the rules won't let you do it, they have the right to appeal it. They can appeal to our zoning board. So what we had was an application is, is the Lutheran Church at six thirty-one Grand Street. They want to replace the sign that's out there right now. Their current sign is a non-conforming sign, as in it's too tall, too big of a sign. They would like to reduce the sign site or the sign size. However, they want to preserve some components of the existing sign. It's still going to be too big. The zoning board determined that since they are reducing the non-conformity of it, that they, that it should be, you know, awarded a variance. It's also on a high-speed road of M two twenty-two. Grand Street is M two twenty-two. So they figured, you know, the largest sign would be appropriate in that zone district there, too. So they voted to approve it. And, and they also scheduled a meeting for January first. Village Express Gas Station, Sterling Properties is the LLC that owns the gas stations. As you know, they applied for rezoning of the county overflow parking lot to be able to extend, expand their gas station, install some car wash operations. That was denied by the Planning Commission and ultimately by the City Council. They reached out to our zoning administrator, inquired if they acquired, if they purchased a parking lot and then regrade it, would that be allowed? Zoning Administrator Lori Castillo made the determination, in my opinion rightfully so, that you cannot regrade a non-conforming use. Our zoning ordinance is very clear, non-conforming uses cannot be altered. She believes, and I believe, that regrading is an alteration. So she denied, you know, or made that determination. They are appealing that determination to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they will be meeting on January fifth to review that appeal.
Any questions? All right, eleven A three is a review of the October and November two thousand and twenty-five Fire District Board Meeting Minutes, and Councilmember Walker.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have the work being done on the, the building, should be starting today or tomorrow. The repair work from the storm earlier this year. That'll be mostly, mostly done by the end of the, by the end of December. Couple of things to take care of on the inside after that, but nothing, nothing major. October, well, actually, we, the chief and one of the other guys went out to Oregon to look at the tanker that we're purchasing, and that should be delivered very shortly, very shortly. Then we'll retire the older tanker one forty-four. In October, we had forty-one incidents compared to fifty-four the year before, and also about fifty hours less in labor than two thousand and twenty-four for the same month, two thousand and twenty-four. Let's see, what else is major? We had the budget with John Cook last, last meeting, and I don't know if there were any lingering questions from that. The new two thousand and twenty-six budget. Had the chiefs, went over the chief's pay package last meeting and approved that five percent increase, as well as one new full-time employee that'll be added for greater coverage during the week. So, and that's about it.
Any questions for Will? All right. Thank you very much. All right, move down to the next agenda item, which is eleven C one, a review of the Water Utilities Department annual report for two thousand and twenty-five.
I'm going to invite Doug Sweeney to the podium before he starts speaking. Just a reminder to council that after thirty-plus years of working for the City of Alleghen, Mr. Sweeney's turned in his retirement notice a few weeks ago. With that, I have appointed Zach Quartz to be the Intramorty Utilities Director for the foreseeable future, you know, until we figure out how to be forward with that department. And with that, Doug, you can begin.
All right. Thank you, Joel. Annual report for the Water, Water Utilities. This does cover from January through the end of November. We don't have the numbers for December yet, since they're, we're not done with the month yet. Water plant, four million, uh, four hundred thirteen million gallons pumped from the ground, three hundred and ten million distributed to the city, residents, industries, commercial establishments. The rest is, there's some used within the plant, backwash of the iron filters, and the rest is reject water that goes back to the river from the RO systems. Currently, we're averaging a fifteen point eight percent water loss. Back T samples, they did approximately a thousand samples for outside communities, commercial establishments that come in, utilize our lab services. Promotional-wise, for the source water protection, we distribute T-shirts with source water logos on them. Three hundred and fifteen were distributed this year. The Christmas tumblers, just given out this past Friday at the parade, we got two hundred and twenty-five distributed. There'll be more here at City Hall. That City Hall will be giving out to the kids when they come to see Santa, and throughout December, they'll be available. Water bottles distributed at the July three parade and the fair parade, we got- We got a thousand bottles of, um, out during those two parades. During the year, uh, let's see, Western Water Tower was um taken out of service for AT&T to do some cellular work on their antennas. Um, that was, I believe, in July. Um, that work has since been completed and taken, put back in service. Zach has uh been maintaining the NPDS permit for the Regent Theater. Um, the Regent had a well and then a cooling system for that well that discharged to the river. Um, needed a discharge permit and uh Zach maintained that with the installation of the chiller this summer. Um, once the warm season was over and the, the uh well could be decommissioned and taken out of service. And so then the, that permit was terminated. Uh, the Water Monster Hydration Station um was placed during the July three event and the sidewalk sale days. Down uh on the riverfront and then at the plaza down the road here. Water plant participated in Bridge Fest with the Source Water Protection Tent. The um, the Source Water Protection Wellhead Protection Committee for Allegan. Um, Allegan received two statewide awards this year. One from Michigan Rural Water Association and one from American Water Works Association for the work that Allegan does to promote um groundwater safety and protection. Uh, water tower, Western Water Tower was painted. Moving to kind of the other side, bad news is we um have had a pump failure on RO three. Um, that's at a rebuild facility. Zach is currently looking at um options of either rebuilding that pump or purchasing a new one. Depending on what, you know, what the prices are, um, how that will work out. Along with that, with the bailing, bearing failure, it put pieces of the bearing into the RO unit. So we are looking at that if that RO unit, the membranes um have to be replaced at this time. Um, what can be done about it? So that unfortunately will be a expense in the future discount, this fiscal year, um, probably after the first of the year at some point. Uh, let's see, both water and wastewater plants participate in the consumers energy demand response. Um, that depending on energy usage throughout the state. Um, it is an annual program now. Um, that would require us, if there's high usage and high demand throughout the state, the plants would go on to generator usage for up to four hours at an event. Depending on how many events are called, um, and how much demand we can shed uh from the electrical system. The city does get a substantial rebate from consumers for participating in that program. Uh, let's see, and just recently in November, Eagle uh did what they call a sanitary survey um of the water plant. Basically, they look over all the records, all the processes, procedures, and um make sure that the city is operating the water plant and distribution system properly. Moving on to the Water Resource Recovery Facility. Um, they treated, that plant treated three hundred and thirty-five million gallons of raw sewage uh for the year so far. Um, industrial sewage, that would be from our industry in town here. They have discharged eighty-three million gallons. Trucked in is just over eleven million gallons with um about almost fourteen hundred trucks delivering that to the, the treatment system. Septage, um, nine point eight million gallons through the end of November. Um, we will be very close to ten million gallons again this year of septage. Septage trucks, thirty-six hundred trucks come in delivering that. And of, of, with those trucks, um, there are twenty-five companies that are not only in Allegan County, but at Ottawa. Ottawa, Kent, I don't think we have anybody in Berry County right now, Kalamazoo and Van Buren County that all deliver septage to the city. Bio solids, um, for the year so far, we have applied seven point five million gallons of bio solids. And that would be eight hundred and eighty-two trucks. Um, currently, the plant is running on one treatment basin or twenty-five percent capacity. So, um, you know, the plant has a lot of capacity should industry increase, um, locate in the city. Um, we're able to handle much more capacity. The treatment plant works with the Kalamazoo River Watershed Council, um, collecting samples, uh, getting them analyzed for the TMDL for, um, on the river that tracks the phosphorus in the river. Um, the excess phosphorus throughout the river and Lake Allegan. Industrial pretreatment inspections and sampling were done on the two permitted industries in the city. The treatment plant did receive one violation from the state um on our discharge permit. And that was uh due to a discharge from a local industry that caused a pass-through, actually two different pass-throughs of color um that they discharged and got into the river. Um, due to those discharges from the industry, they were issued violations by our um staff and sewer use ordinance. And then they were also fined uh twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars plus recovery cost to uh damaged equipment. Uh, we had a return sludge pump failure, um, that was repaired and replaced. A lift station pump um was leaking, that was uh removed from service, uh, taken to a repair shop. It repaired and then put back in service. Uh, the lab passed their annual lab proficiency testing. Again, the, the wastewater plant, the Water Resource Recovery Plant participates in the injured, Consumers Energy Response Program. Um, both plants are currently training two new operators. Um, not, we don't have four new operators, it's two, they're cross-train, cross-trained, so they can operate both the water plant and the resource recovery plant. Distribution collection, um, throughout the year, there was two hundred and three service turn-ons, offs. Um, that is due to um aged receivables or overdue bills um that were turned on and off. The uh staff for distribution collection responded to sixteen hundred misdig uh notifications. So they had to go out sixteen hundred times and locate water mains, sewer mains, water services for various underground work around the city. Uh, there were seventeen sewer backups reported for water main uh events that happened throughout the year. The uh staff cleaned fourteen thousand feet of sanitary sewer with their, with the Vactor truck. Our staff installed two new services, uh, two new buildings, new houses. And then in addition to that, there was thirteen new accounts or buildings um added to the, the water system. Um, that does not include the houses that are being built up in River Ridge off of Delano. Um, the services are installed but not connected yet, so they do not have an account, so. Um, when that does happen, that'll be, I believe, forty-two new houses up there. So that'll um add several accounts for the next year to two years. Um, last year, or this, this year, I should say, there was a hundred and thirteen lead services replaced. Um, we completed the Booker Funding Service Replacement in the end of August. Um, with the Booker Funding, the city and also contracting with Milbacher and Sons replaced a total of four hundred and twenty-six services with the funding that we received from the state. We purchased a new push camera for the collection system, um, staff to use. Started engineering on utility replacements in the neighborhoods. Um, Grand Street downtown and both sides of Rossman Park neighborhoods. Responded to a few quality concern calls, um, repaired a leaky water valve um on River Street, I'm sorry, on North Main Street. And this department is also training two new operators, um, which are different from the operators in the water and wastewater plants. So, are there questions? There was a lot of information there.
Joel, when, um, my question on the numbers, I think the only thing, the Water Resource Recovery. Is it, I don't remember from last year, actually, do we see? Uh, it seems like we did have a comparison of other years.
So, so in January is most council recall, except for Charles, who's your new. In January, you guys have a meeting with each department head. We have dinner together and each department head gives an overview of their department and part of that is their accomplishments from the previous year. So if you go back to that presentation that happened, you know, eleven months ago, you'll be able to see. So if there's specific data you'd like to see compared to last year, as I mentioned in the email, well, feel free to just email that to me and Doug and we can try to get that put together.
Especially with the resource recovery, there's a lot of, a lot of numbers there. And if we could, yeah, it'd be good to see, but I'll, I'll.
Yeah, email us the exact ones you wanna see, you know.
And then what's the difference between raw and domestic sewage?
Raw sewage is everything coming in, domestic would be the raw sewage minus industrial. So industry um is basically perigal sewage that gets built separately. Um, so we, we separate that out so we know how much industrial sewage is coming in. And then you have the trucked industrial, um, that's what gets trucked in from outside of Allegan, which is.
Two different.
Yes, that's two different industrial streams. Um, they both run through the treatment plant. In addition to the trucked industrial, there is septage that is trucked in also. And that runs through a different process than the city industrial and the trucked industrial. And that's why they're broken out to see the different waste streams that are coming into the treatment facility.
And what is TMDL?
TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Loading. So that was um on the Kalamazoo River in nineteen ninety-nine. The, all the point sources, the, all the wastewater plants on the Kalamazoo River established the TMDL. Um, because the state wanted to reduce the discharge of phosphorus into the river. Phosphorus is a nutrient, promotes um weed, algae growth, and was severely impairing Lake Allegan. The agreement in ninety-nine that all the point sources signed on to, um, they agreed that during the summer months, six summer months, um, splitting them in half, so April, May and June, they agreed to reduce their phosphorus discharge by fifty percent. So that was fifty percent of what was discharged in nineteen ninety-nine. And then in July, August and September, they reduce it by, I'm sorry. In April, May, June, they reduce it by twenty-five percent and July, August, September, they reduce it by fifty percent. So, um, that's been going on since nineteen ninety-nine um to try and, you know, make Lake Allegan a better lake for public use.
Great, thanks.
Are there any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I just wanna point out that that right there, thank you for thirty-two years. You have so much knowledge, like you just rattled all that stuff up, off, so I just wanna thank you.
You're welcome.
And welcome, Zach. You know, you got big shoes to fill, so hopefully he can impart some of that.
And, and Zach is, I'll say, gaining in knowledge, um, he's been here, will be ten years in January, eleven years. Um, in January, so he has accumulated, I'll say, a third of my knowledge already, so. So, yeah, um, I have all the confidence in the world in Zach, so.
Don't go anywhere, I have a question. Kind of like, uh, Will wanted to see comparison. What about the water loss difference, you know, that off the top of your head from twenty twenty-four to, to this number? I think it was like fifteen percent.
Leave the city manager asking you, email, email these questions to us.
I will email, I will email the question, cause I want, I, I mean, that's a big one. All right, how about this one, the RO three failure?
Yes.
Do you know the root cause or is it just something that happens over time with the use? Or was there something that was out of the?
We're, we're, we're trying to assess that and figure out why. Um, the pumps have carbon bearings in them and at first we thought it was one bearing that failed. Uh, the, these water pumps have several stages in them, so that helps build wa- pressure in the system. Because uh that first stage pump runs hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy PSI to push it through the RO membranes. So there's several stages. When um the company come in, remove the pump, took it to their shop, disassembled, there was actually three uh bearings in the stages that were failed. Um, one of them, when they took it apart, right at, took it out at the plant, um, they had the pieces. Zach has them sitting on his desk. The other two, I'm assuming, blew through the RO system because as Zach's been taking it apart and inspecting the membranes, you can see all little bits and pieces of the um carbon bearings in there. So now the question is, and Zach has a call into the manufacturer, what does that mean for those membranes?
Yeah, so it's not like something we could plan that was gonna happen, you know, it's, uh, the life of whatever this is, is ten years or something.
The question's gonna be, when he determines, do we repair it or replace it? We have two more systems sitting there. Do we wait till they fail, which means potentially replacing the RO membranes? Or do we just get this one back, take the next one out of service, have them replace the bearings? And keep on going and then do the third one? Um, that will be a question that has to be answered by Zach and the city manager and the finance director.
All right, it sounds like you guys are getting a plan together and, yeah, just, just so we can plan on, do the best we can to plan on things and.
I think you'll probably see more about this on the council retreat and upcoming budget.
All right, and Doug's like, I'm outta here, so have a good time.
I didn't wanna put that too much.
I, I know it, I know it, all right, well, thanks, Doug, very much, all right.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Okay, moving down to agenda item eleven D one is a request to approve PO two six dash zero eight four four to Waste Recovery Systems in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for the storm sewer lining of Hooker Road.
Thank you, Mayor. So far in twenty twenty-five, we've had two large sinkholes uh form over on Hooker. Um, upon investigation, our twelve-inch uh storm sewer is the cause of those sinkholes. And so Jeff Maury, who's our depart, our DPW director, uh, went out, received three uh estimates to line that storm sewer, it's about seventy-five feet that we're gonna be lining. Uh, the low price is Waste Recovery Systems, this is an acceptable practice to prolong the life of a pipe without ripping up a road to do it. So we are recommending that we go with uh water or Waste Recovery Systems to line that portion of the Hooker Road Storm Sewer. Any questions?
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, make a motion to approve that expenditure.
All right.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any additional comments or questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next agenda item is eleven E one, which is a request to approve accounts payable and payroll and council person Walker or council person Hooker, would you please? Sorry, we'll got, we'll got, oh, what?
There is a request to approve accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Payroll in the amount of one four, one hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents for a total of five hundred eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. I make a motion that we approve those.
And can I get a support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any additional questions to staff on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Eleven E two is a request to adopt resolution twenty-five thirty-seven to approve FY twenty twenty-six first quarter budget adjustment report.
Tracy, you wanna handle this, you want me to? All right, no problem. Uh, so in your packet is a report from uh city staff that identifies the budget adjustment explanations for revenues, our budget adjustment explanations for expenditures, our budget adjustment recommendations for revenues. our budget adjustment recommendations for revenues and our budget adjustment recommendations for the expenditures. So you have four reports in there, you also received a first quarter summary of all the funds and a snapshot of the city's cash and investment totals. Adjustments we make to our revenues is if we are expecting to receive, you know, a thousand dollars from the state, but we get a thousand and three hundred, those are hypothetical numbers, then we have to adjust to show we brought in more money than what we were budgeting. Same with expenses, if we're showing that we're going to spend more on projects, then we have to show those as well. Council, you all approve the budget adjustments to your annual actions or your, your weekly, your bi-weekly meetings when we have stuff, you know, taken care of here. Any questions in the report we submit? We do this for the first quarter, the second quarter and the third quarter. And then the fourth quarter, you guys adjust, you guys approve a resolution authorizing the finance director to make adjustments so we can end the year in a balanced budget.
Could you remind us, I know some of the, maybe expenses and revenue is deferred until we'll realize it later, is that correct? Like some, like the revenue losses, not losses, but shortfall, I guess. Is that, like sewer utilities or the, well, I'm sorry, that's, that's not applicable, hold on, I'm sorry.
So a lot of the adjustments you're seeing for the revenue are going to be because we either planned on receiving a grant that we didn't receive or we received the money in the prior year or the project just isn't going to happen, so there should be adjustments on both sides.
Gotcha.
If you have specific questions, I can write them down and get back to you, but a lot of the first quarter adjustments are transfers over from fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And just adjusting for where things ended up year end and the beginning of this fiscal year. And then the other adjustments that you would see would be anything that you've approved through the council meetings from July first till now. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does.
Are there any other questions from council? Very good, well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five thirty-seven?
I will make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-five point three seven.
Support.
All right, so moved and supported, any other council comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye, aye, opposed, motion passes. Eleven E three is a request to schedule a public hearing for January twelfth, twenty twenty-five regarding the potential sale of city-owned property on Low Street to, is it Woda Cooper Companies LLC?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in October, city council directed staff to put together a request for proposals to solicit interest in developing a two-acre parcel that the city owns on Low Street for the development of housing. We were pre-approached by this company, Woda Cooper Companies regarding this specific proposal and that's why we brought it to council in October, mentioning that they'd be interested in developing it. We shared with them that we believe it is contaminated. They are a well-rooted development team that has no problem developing contaminated properties. And so they submitted a proposal to work with us. That proposal was attached to your report on the screens and as shown on the last page of their proposal is, you know, a conceptual plan of what they plan on doing, it's a three-story, fifty-three unit apartment building. They are looking at applying for Lytech low-income housing tax credits through the state of Michigan and the federal government for the April twenty twenty-six round through MISTDA. So they have some work to go to get there. The first step is to get the property under control. So as you know, through our city charter, chapter thirteen, section nine dictates how the city can sell public property. We have to notice it for three consecutive weeks in the local newspaper, but not more than seven days from the date of the public hearing. That means the first available city council meeting to have that public hearing would be January twelfth, twenty twenty-five. So the recommendation to you to see twenty twenty-six, thank you. My report's correct, my report also says twenty-six, but the PowerPoint says twenty-five, so I apologize for that. The action requested in the report submitted to council in your packet is, it is request that city council direct city staff to begin the process of selling city-owned property to Woda Cooper Companies LLC on Low Street to be developed into an affordable apartment complex and schedule a public hearing for January twelfth, twenty twenty-six to receive comment on this potential sale and approve a purchase and development agreement. So you won't be making the official decision to approve the purchase and development agreement until January twelfth, twenty twenty-six. Any questions for staff? All right, have you been a motion for this?
Yep, can I get a motion?
I will make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for January twelfth, twenty twenty-six.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, motion, motion passes. Eleven E four, review the Griswold Auditorium capital improvement report.
Yes, I will go ahead and review this one with the council. This is just a general update on, you know, progress that's been ongoing at the Griswold over the last few years. And then just looking at the end for council to kind of give us the direction to spend some money that we have available on the Marilla Lounge. So before we get there, the pictures that you see on the screen are a mix of before and after photos of the work that was recently completed by Vintage Building and Restoration out of Hastings. In twenty twenty-four, the city contracted with this company to perform work including brick tuck pointing, window frame replacement and repainting, we've got wood window frames there at the building, a lot of those were rotting and falling apart. The installation of a new roof over the main entrance, those are those photos on the right-hand side of the screen. Fire escape welding and repainting and interior plaster and paintwork. All of this work was done over the last year and just wrapped up in the beginning of November. The project was budgeted at over a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and we expended a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The only change order, change order, excuse me, made to the project was that roof work. It was just found that there was more rot and deterioration underneath the shingles than initially noted in the first inspection. So there was some additional work there, but the project still came in under what the city had originally budgeted, so. In October, for the second year, the city partnered with the Alligan Lions Club to host a joint fundraiser featuring the stage production of Eskenaba in the Moonlight over two weekends in October. It was a volunteer-led production that raised over five thousand dollars for the Griswold portion of the fundraiser. The Lions Club also took home a portion of the funds raised that night. And then in, when we did this the last time in twenty twenty-three, the funds raised were used almost immediately for an emergency boiler repair that had to happen just a couple of weeks after the show. So that money was put to good use very quickly. Fortunately, we are still sitting on that money right now from this year's production, so hasn't been spent on a boiler yet. And then on December second, we got some good news from the Alligan County Community Foundation from a grant that was applied for in summer twenty twenty-five by Mohammed Gabo there in the back, our Siedum Fellow here at City Hall. We were notified that we were awarded eight thousand dollars as part of this grant request to remodel the Marilla Lounge. We have been working on the Marilla Lounge since twenty twenty. Previously, city council meetings used to happen in that room. I think Mayor Pergrow is the only one that would have had a meeting hosted in that room. But when this building was constructed in twenty nineteen, those meetings and DDA meetings, Public Spaces Commission, et cetera, et cetera, all relocated here. So we took that opportunity during the pandemic to rip up the carpet that was in that room, refinish the floors, beautiful wood floors underneath that carpet. That was just kind of our first step. We've most recently contracted with the Speckle Dahlia, it's a local interior designer. This gentleman lives on Marshall Street in Alligan for some visioning and consulting to re-envision this room. The goal has been for many years to create an attractive and sophisticated event space for, a flexible space for the gatherings that we host there now, things like baby showers, graduation parties. The photo that you see on the screen was actually a wedding reception that was held there. And then just increase programming and maximize the value of the Griswold by having this space get a bit of a facelift. The Griswold is going to turn one hundred years old in twenty twenty-nine. We would like to utilize those funds that were awarded by the community foundation, raised by the Lions Club fundraiser and the remaining balance of that rehab project that we contracted with Vintage Building and Restorations on to complete the remodel of the Marilla Lounge next year in twenty twenty-six. Those things include new furniture and furnishings, new paint, new serving bar with cooler and three-compartment sink and storage space. New intimate performance stage in the south corner of the Marilla Lounge, kind of like where the grand piano is at now. We want to give that piano a little home and then also be able to host like small two-to-three-piece bands and then new outdoor patio furniture. The image that you see, like I said, was a wedding reception that was hosted there and then Ryan and I just had some fun and painted the walls and ceiling just to give it a different look. And it was around Christmas time, you can see our Christmas tree and lights and wreaths in the window. Any questions on anything that I shared?
So the plan from staff is to get a motion of support from city council to direct us to move forward with the budgeting aspect, secure some bids for improving the Marilla, utilizing the funding that Parker referenced in his report as well on, as well as on the first slide of this part of the presentation. There's more than enough money in that area to make the investments in the Marilla. One reason we are pushing the rehab of the Marilla over other projects that might, that are needed at the Griswold is that is a gathering spot pretty much for any event that occurs at the Griswold. For those of you that have been to events at the Griswold Auditorium, you know that's where people kind of congregate. Currently, the, what I'm going to call the bar setup that's in there right now, whether if it's selling adult beverages or just, you know, punch and Sprite, those are our old desktops from the former city hall. So those aren't even tables or bars, those were hutches that instead of throwing into the trash can where they belonged, we repurposed, you know, that pressed particle board wood to serve as that. Whenever we have events there, we have to roll up a Coca-Cola cooler from the basement that weighs a lot. So much that I no longer try to roll it up, I just let Ryan and Parker figure a way to get it up the stairs. And it doesn't keep pop that cold. The white nineteen fifties metal kitchen cabinetry, which is cool looking, is just not a good utilization of that space. So we're looking for something, as Parker mentioned, more sophisticated, a little more intimate and we think we can really get it. And so we are looking for a motion from council to kind of say, hey, keep going down this path, come back with, you know, some budgetary numbers and some proposals from contractors to pull this off. And answer any questions you might have about direction for that building.
All right, any questions that anybody has? So can I get a motion to give staff approval to move forward with budgeting for an interior redesign of the Marilla Lounge? Is that, sum it up?
Yeah, I mean, the design's going on right now, but yeah.
You want approval to continue with it.
To continue it and, yeah. Bring it to fruition.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the continuation of the Marilla Lounge construction and refurbishment.
Support.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, any other thoughts, comments from council? All right, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, motion passes. Moving down to agenda item number thirteen is the second public comment portion of tonight's agenda. If you have a public comment, please approach the podium and state your name and address. I do not see any public comment, so I'll move down to agenda item number fourteen, which is communications from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a few things I need to share with council. Starting with tomorrow night, from twel, from five to seven PM, there is an open house here in the city council chambers for our construction projects for next year. Doug Swears mentioned it during his presentation, but we will be doing work on the water main along Grand Street from river to Main Street roughly. We're going to be doing water, sewer, storm, landscaping, roads, sidewalk work along Trow Bridge from Locust to Walnut and then Walnut from Trow Bridge to Hubbard and Chestnut from Trow Bridge to Hubbard as well as all of the streets and water and sewer and tree removal and tree planting in the Rossman Park neighborhood. The weight envisioned for tomorrow night is we're going to remove all the chairs and we're going to put the downtown project and plans along the window wall and then the Rossman Park project and plans will be along the dry erase board wall and then people can come and go as they want, interact with staff, interact with our engineers, Abbott and Marsh will be here. We'll have some one-page flyers to give residents to tell, you know, to kind of summarize the project, the work, start times, stuff like that, what to expect. The Rossman Park project is going to be a very big project and a big disruptor, you know, for that neighborhood. So we're going to have to coordinate trash pickup and all that stuff. So that's important for tomorrow night. You're more than welcome to come join and ask questions of the engineers that you may not have answered yet. Then this Saturday on the thirteenth at noon is Reefs Across America at the Oakwood Cemetery that is being put on by the Friends of Oakwood Cemetery. As with any organization, they can always use more volunteers to help place wreaths. I think right now it's a little north of six hundred wreaths that are going to be placed out there. So this is a big endeavor that the Friends of Oakwood Cemetery are taking on and I'm sure every hand helps. And then finally, on the twenty-second, so for your next meeting from three to five-thirty, we will be having a reception for Doug Swears, celebrating his retirement, having a little bittersweet goodbye to him. Council, you are more than invited and encouraged to attend. We will be wrapping it up sharp at five-thirty because then we have to flip this room right around for council at six o'clock. But I've already told Doug that he does not need to be at council that night for his final, you know, going away party. So he will be done with us around five-thirty, so feel free to come by and give him one last, you know, thanks for your time. And this Friday, just a reminder, is our city Christmas party. And if you haven't responded back to staff to let them know if you are attending, please do it, do so and let us know if you're bringing a plus one or one point five, if you have a kid under the age of five. The Christmas party is this Friday. Show up at twelve o'clock. Uh, show up at twelve o'clock. And if you can't be, that's also okay. I I would say maybe a few council members are, show up each year. It's more for the employees just to kick back and celebrate together.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, councilperson Clark, anything tonight? All right, thank you. Councilperson Westover?
I'm all set, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilperson Walker?
Uh, we still are doing the warming center, of course. And this week, we are at the Episcopal Church until uh until Sunday. Then we switch back over to the Presbyterian Church, and we're from five to nine, if anyone's interested. Always take more volunteers. Uh, Community Action has offered a space in their building and but that won't uh probably won't be ready until the end of January. And then uh, but they're being very, very helpful and getting a lot of, a lot of good support, so that's it.
Councilperson Canales?
Yes, um, just want to say thanks, Doug, for all your years of service. And uh, Zach, hope to see you for years to come. Thank you.
Councilperson Hooker?
I don't have anything, thank you.
All right. Um, Doug, I just wanna tell you, congratulations. And I think I tell you all the time, you're one of my favorite city employees, so I'm gonna miss you. Um, and welcome, Zach, I'm sure you'll become one of my favorites, too. I don't wanna be impartial here. Um, but that is all I had, so at seven oh seven, I will adjourn.